Good evening and welcome to the Corder Madera Planning Commission for Tuesday, October 22nd. Please call and roll.
Commissioner Bashoyer?
Here.
Commissioner Kenny?
Here.
Vice Chair Rizzo? And Chair Chase?
Here.
Margaret is absent. Okay, please join me in a salute to the flag. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this point in every meeting, we open it up to public comment for that which is not on tonight's agenda. So if you have something to contribute for three minutes, you may step up to the microphone and do so. I don't see anyone jumping up. Is there anybody online that would like to contribute?
No hands are raised online.
No. Okay, then we will close that section of our meeting for open time, public comment.
Sorry, one hand is raised now.
Oh goodness, okay. So we will have that open and you can join them and somebody's going to keep a timer on this or I shall.
Eric M., you should be allowed to unmute yourself now.
Yes.
Yes.
Cool. This is.
Sorry, what was that?
Can't hear you. Not yet. That will come up shortly. You will have an opportunity to contribute. This is open time for that which is not on the agenda.
Got it.
We will take you off and when that comes up, you can raise your hand. Thank you. So tonight, we have three items on the agenda. We have a general plan amendment and two hearings for design review. We will start off with the general plan amendment to the public safety and hazards element. And I believe this is going to be Amy Lyles.
Yes, thank you Chair Chase, members of the commission. I think they're working on sharing my presentation, but this is a very technical item tonight. So what we're asking of you tonight is to make a recommendation on a technical change to our general plan. And this is specific to the public safety and hazards element to make sure that we're referencing our adopted multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. So you're essentially taking an adopted document and making a reference to another adopted document. But unfortunately, we do have to go through this process because this actually increases our opportunity for funding if there were to be a disaster. There's some state legislation related to having this reference very, very clearly laid out in the safety element. Next slide, please. So just a little bit of background and I'll try to have a very brief presentation. But AB 240 is the legislation that I was speaking about that was signed back in 2006. And it basically says that if you have your hazard mitigation plan referenced in your general plan, that the jurisdiction is eligible for additional funding related to FEMA and disaster recovery. And so our general plan, our existing general plan was adopted in 2009. And then it was amended with the housing element and the public safety and hazards element in 2023. So the most recent element that you have was last touched last year. So there is just a small change that we're asking for related to the multi-jurisdiction, multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan, which was adopted by the council in January of this year. Next slide, please. And this is way too small to read, but there is the full safety element in your packet tonight. And there's really one page that's impacted and just shows the red line of what needs to change. So we did have a hazard mitigation plan and this is really just recognizing the update of that. So within your packet, there is this detail that you've hopefully reviewed. And we're asking for your recommendation tonight. Next slide, please. And so we have determined as a staff team that this is within the previously adopted EIR for the general plan. So no further environmental review is required for this technical change. Next slide. And so our recommendation tonight is that you hold a public hearing and then recommend approval of a resolution to the town council to make this formal amendment to our general plan to recognize the hazard mitigation plan. And that concludes my presentation.
Very short. Okay, so I'll see if the commissioners have any questions for you. Daniel, do you have any questions for staff?
No questions.
All right. Valerie?
No questions.
I don't have any questions either.
Okay, nor do I. So we will take public comment on this. So I don't know if any of you are familiar with it, but certainly there was a copy at the back desk if you cared to read it. So if you want to comment, you have three minutes to do so. And I don't see anybody standing. So is there anyone online that would like to make public comment?
I see no hands raised online.
And I would gather we don't have any emails regarding this either. So. Anyway, I will say, no. All right. So with that, we will close the public comment on this section and bring it back here for discussion amongst the members. So Daniel, any commentary on this item?
Only that this seems to be a very logical thing to be doing and to update the general plan to make this connection. And I'm prepared to make a motion pending other comments from other members.
Jim?
Yeah, I think since we share shores and forests with the other jurisdictions, I can see that working together is the best course of action on the hazard mitigation plan. If something bad were ever to happen, this will give us a clearer path to move swiftly in the wake of some sort of emergency.
Valerie?
Same, I support this.
So this is just a document that brings us into compliance and gives us opportunity for additional funding. So with that said, who has a motion for this?
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve a resolution of the planning commission of the town of Corder Madera recommending that the town council adopt a resolution amending the public safety and hazard element of the Corder Madera general plan to recognize the adoption of the 2024 Marin County Multi-Jurisdictional Local Hazard Mitigation Plan and the Town and Court of Madera Annex.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Okay, vote. Roll call.
Commissioner Bashoyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizzo?
Yes.
And Chair Chase?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving swiftly along here, we go to item 5B, which is entitled 73 Granada Drive. This is a design review application PL 24-0057 for a 604 square foot second story addition to an existing two-story home. Phil? Tracy, is it yours to present?
It is. Thank you Chair Chase. We are pulling up the slides. Give us one moment here. Lots to juggle this meeting.
Sorry, what?
Lots to juggle this meeting.
Oh yeah, right. Hey, there we go.
Okay. And as you so succinctly said, this is a public hearing for a design review application for a 604 square foot addition to the two-story home at 73 Granada Drive. Slide please. The project site is a corner lot situated at the intersection of Granada Drive and Sonora Way in the Marin Estates neighborhood. Adjacent to the project site to the south and to the east across Granada Drive are single-family homes. Additional single-family homes are located to the west and north across Sonora Way. Most homes in the vicinity of the project site are two-story homes. The shortest property line is along Granada Drive and is therefore by definition the front property line. Due to the fact that Sonora Way property line curves without interruption from the southwest corner of the lot to the northeast corner of the lot, this entire property line is the rear property line. In other words, the property has a front, interior side, and rear property line. Next slide, please. The parcel is just over 11,000 square feet in area, which is approximately 3,200 square feet smaller than the standard lot size in the R1 zone. Standard lot size is 7,500 square feet. The parcel is developed with a 1,580 square foot two-story residence and attached 428 square foot two-car garage. The existing home was constructed in the late 50s as a four-bedroom, two-bathroom, two-story residence. The parcel is zoned R1 medium-density residential. And this slide is showing the existing proposed and required development standards. At the time of its construction, the home was consistent with all the R1 zoning district development standards with the exception of the front yard setback. The east elevation of the home at the face of the garage, it was built approaching into the required front yard setback. The existing front yard setback is 18 feet where 20 feet is required. The proposed addition to the second story meets front yard setback requirements. It is going to be set back 20 feet, eight inches from the front property line. The addition to the second floor is positioned over the garage and kitchen area at the south end of the existing home. The existing home and the proposed addition are 82 feet from the rear of the west property line where 25 feet is required. And as mentioned on the last slide, the proposed addition will be set back 20 feet, eight inches from the front property line where 20 feet is required. And lastly, it is proposed to be set back 15 feet, nine inches from the interior side property line to the south where required is six feet. The interior of the front entry will be remodeled, but otherwise the first story floor plan will remain unchanged. The project includes a 604 square foot addition to the existing second story of the home. The existing second floor contains two bedrooms and one bathroom. And the addition to the second floor includes a primary bedroom suite there at the bottom of the slide, which would include the bedroom itself, the walk-in closet and the primary bathroom and water closet. And in addition, the addition includes a new laundry room. This slide is showing the existing and proposed east elevation which faces Granada Drive and includes the attached two-car garage, a small front porch and front entry door. A small dormer is located at the existing second story. The proposed second story addition is shown on the bottom elevation, of course, above the garage with the new roof ridge perpendicular to the main roof ridge of the existing home. The addition will include one new window at the front elevation facing the street. Additionally, as part of the construction of the addition, the roof of the, front of the, roof of the front of the garage will be replaced with a reframe or eliminate the clipped gable that's shown at the front of the garage. There's a similar clipped gable at the existing dormer on the second story that will also be reframed to more closely match the roof lines of the proposed addition. And lastly, at the front elevation, there's a space in between the front porch and a decorative eve at the edge of the home that will be filled in to create a straight line at the first level of the home. On all of the proposed elevations on this slide and the next few slides, there's a dash line that indicates the existing line of the home. This is showing the west elevation or the rear of the existing and proposed home. And as I stated, the ridge of the addition is coming off perpendicular from the main roof ridge of the existing second story. It includes a large picture window facing the rear yard and includes removal of the existing chimney. There's no other changes to the windows and doors on this elevation. Moving on to the south elevation. This elevation faces the only immediately adjacent neighbor at 77 Granada Drive. The wall plane of the second story addition on this elevation is aligned with the wall of the building at the first floor below it. And it's evident when viewing this elevation that the change to the massing of the structure is really occurring at this south elevation. This south elevation faces the neighbor's side yard where the neighbor has one window at the upper floor and one window at their first floor. There are three new windows proposed at the upper level of the addition. Two of the windows are at the primary bedroom and the third window is at the water closet of the proposed bathroom. The windows in the primary bedroom are two-foot, four-inch by four-foot casement windows. The bathroom window is a two-by-two casement window. And again, their dash line on the proposed elevation is showing the outline of the existing. Next slide, please. This is showing the north elevation which faces Sonora Way. From this elevation, the existing second stories in the foreground and the proposed addition is positioned behind it, again at the south end of the building. One window of the addition is visible facing north and then an additional window will be added at the existing second story also facing towards Sonora Way. The applicant proposes to match the colors and materials at the existing home. The existing home uses a blue-gray stucco and horizontal siding with wood trim. And the addition will also utilize horizontal siding painted a blue-gray color. Windows will be white to match the existing residence. Staff is recommending approval of this application. Analysis of design refine, review findings is included in the draft resolution. And I'm here to answer any questions and I don't see the architect at the moment, but hopefully. Check and see if, where is that?
All right. Thank you Tracy. So that means that someone's going to make a statement for the applicant. Is that the architect online or someone in the room? Okay. He's watching online? Oh, you don't see him? Okay. Unfortunate. So see then if he shows up, he can make a statement online. But with that said, then I will take this directly to public comment for this item. So that said, is there anybody here that would like to stand up and make public comment on this project? I don't see anyone wanting to do that. So how about anybody else online? Is there anyone?
Yes, there's one person online.
Okay.
Eric, I'm going to go ahead and allow you to unmute and then I'm going to set up a timer that we can start. So don't start, once you start talking, I'll start the timer and you'll see it on the screen.
Is that Eric, the architect?
Uh, this is Eric M.
He's the next door neighbor.
Eric, were you able to unmute?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep. Once you start talking, I'll go ahead and start the timer.
Okay, okay.
We got you. Yeah.
So, so yeah. To the south, south, 77. Well, the neighbors. I think the architect did a great design and their family will be add space to grow with them. Our only comment was related to the impact on our privacy as created by the bedroom windows. The windows on the south elevation in the proposed primary suite upstairs look directly into our backyard and our great room, which includes our living and dining area. This is where we spend 90% of our time at home. And one of our top criteria when purchasing our home was because of the privacy it afforded. And want to maintain that while still allowing our neighbors to move forward with the addition in a way that works for both parties. So yeah, we'd hope to come to a resolution that preserves their desire for natural light coming from the south elevation, but also preserves our privacy. So happy to make myself available for further discussion and want to reiterate that I'm supportive of the project overall and hope to work constructively as a good neighbor to arrive at a solution that works for everyone. You know, a couple of options. Certainly could be, one, removing those windows or two, changing them to some sort of opaque privacy glass, but I imagine that those two are less desirable to the homeowners of 73. So perhaps one proposed compromise could be a transom window that would be placed above where, the area where I imagine the bed would be in that primary suite, which would, you know, be a higher sill height versus the current proposed windows. And that higher sill height and the fact that it would be over the bed versus on both sides of the bed would minimize the sightlines both from our house into their bedroom, but also from their bedroom into our backyard and living room and dining room.
Okay, does that conclude your statement, Eric?
It does, thanks.
Okay. Hang on a sec before you disappear. Is he still on?
I am.
Yeah, okay. I don't think we have anybody here for the applicant, right? So.
I have found the architect I can get him onto my phone at the moment.
Okay. So let me just ask you, Eric, while we have you online. You said you would propose possibly obscuring the glass or raising them to transoms. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, both of those would be acceptable.
All right, just wanted to be clear about that so that the commission hears it and the public hears it. So we'll see if we can get you the architect online, but thank you for your commentary. We'll take you offline and see if we can't get the architect to make their presentation online. Okay, so Eric, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay. It's, I ask you to speak clearly and loudly. So it's your moment to make a presentation here.
Yes, my sincere apologies for confusion. I was instructed to come in a little later or there was a misunderstanding there. I could come in in 10 minutes if, just in the neighborhood, but I'm happy to do it this way as well.
Let's see what you want to tell us. So let's go ahead.
Okay. Do you mind if I read a quick letter from the clients? Is that all right?
Absolutely, that's fine.
Okay. So the clients are out of town, owners, in a time zone that did not afford them to zoom in. So they asked me to just read a quick blurb here. So they say, so dear members of the community and staff and committee, my name is Alexandra Ginnett. Ginnett, my husband Francis and I are excited to share our vision for the expansion of the home in Corder Madera. As a longtime Marin resident, this community holds a special place in my heart. We feel incredibly fortunate to be raising our two children, James and Lily, in such a wonderful environment. Our goal with this expansion is to create a home that will grow with our family, provide us with space and comfort needed for years to come. We are eager to contribute to this community, which I have always known to be such an amazing place to live and raise a family. Thank you for considering our project and we truly appreciate your time and attention to this matter. Sincerely, Alexandra and Francis. So that was their little letter as an intro. Would you like me to make a basic introduction on our approach to the design? Or has the staff report covered that fairly extensively already?
Well, I will ask the commissioners if they feel like the staff report covers what they feel they need to know, number one. Number two, then, I'd like you to address your neighbor's commentary. So.
Okay. The go ahead.
Jim, do you have any questions?
I do not. Okay.
Valerie? Okay, then please, let's move into talking about these windows and so forth that are in discussion by the neighbor.
Certainly. Would you like to hear me speak to that now?
Yes, please.
Very good. So the owners of the proposed project are flexible about these windows. They received some comments from the neighbor up slope and at 77 that expressed some concern that the window in the farthest southwest corner of the addition on the upper story would potentially have a, an impact on their privacy on the up slope for their patio as well as a window in their living room, which is beyond the patio or further away than the patio. Now, they sent us a photo from that view and it is fairly well screened. I took a look around as well and met Tracy out there and we took a gander at it. And it has a very minor impact, in my opinion, with a privacy issue. And so my thinking on it was that it was not enough to merit the removal or adjustment of the application. And for a few reasons. And the first reason is that the distance away is that it's, the patio is approximately 20 and 40 feet away. So 20 to 40 feet would be the patio area. And then the window and the living room is more like 40 to 50 feet away. The other mitigating factor is that the, it's not really in a direct view. It's off to the side, as it were, from the two properties. There's also a six-foot high fence which obstructs the vast majority of the window at standing height from the patio and probably half of the window from the standing height in the living room window, if you were in that window and you were trying to see into the other window or the proposed window. The other factor is that there is established vegetation that is between the spaces or the windows. And then finally, the space that is proposed is a bedroom, which obviously desires privacy and will have screens primarily because the neighboring up slope property has two windows that are above this and look down and into the proposed spaces. And so obviously the applicant is going to place shades. The reason we've proposed the windows is because it is, it's preferable to have light from at least two sides of a space so that you can light the space properly. And so the shades would be probably cellular and allow for light to go through, but obstruct direct view. So that's why we've, we thought that the, the negative impact was very modest and left the design as is. That said, the client is really reticent to cause any anxiety to the, you know, to the neighbor about their concerns and is willing to offer an alternative solution if the commission thinks it makes sense. And that alternative solution would be a single window between the existing proposed windows that might be six feet wide and perhaps two and a half feet tall. And then eliminate the two side windows that are proposed, if that may. And then eliminate the two side windows that are proposed, if that makes sense. But only if the commission deliberates and feels that that makes sense.
Okay, um, so that constitutes sort of your reply to those concerns, right?
I'm sorry, was that a question?
No, yeah, it is. That constitutes the totality of your uh response to those concerns.
To those particular concerns, correct.
Okay, all right. Uh, we've heard that. Um, I think that we will end up uh talking about it. We may come back to you, so I don't want you to go away. Um, um, Tracy might put you on mute and then uh we will uh call you back if we need to or unmute you if we need to, if that's all right.
That is absolutely fine, and I'm absolutely available. And again, apologize for my con- uh my confusion on the start time.
Understood, that's fine. So, um, we're gonna mute you and then uh because of your input, um, I will uh open it back up for public comment after that statement by you. So we'll look to the room and see if anybody else here wants to say anything. I don't think so. And the neighbor uh may wish to comment after hearing that presentation from the architect. So I don't know if you can uh, if the gentleman's watching online and wants to raise his hand. Um, he didn't use full three minutes, but I would let him speak after hearing the presentation from the architect.
Yeah, it looks like um Eric's hands raised again. I'm gonna open it up for him to talk.
Thank you.
You should be able to unmute now, Eric.
Yeah, thanks. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, I don't have, um, uh, I appreciate the chance to speak again. I don't really have that much to add other than, um. Yeah, I do I do think when we have looked at the um, the potential impacts of from the the story poles and uh and looking at the the measurements on the plans themselves. I do believe that um, though there is some light vegetation between our properties, um, some of that we do plan to clear, which would increase the the sightlines between our two properties. Uh, in addition to that, I I think the the um uh, yeah, the 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 windows as proposed would have a minor impact, but again, similar to Eric. Um, and uh and similarly motivated to to uh try to find a solution that works for for all parties involved. And so we'll leave it to to you all to deliberate and figure out what what makes most sense.
Okay. Um, thank you very much. We will do that now. We'll uh take it back up here to the dais and talk about it. Um, and then, um, after we talk about it some, I may ask staff about their position on uh this. If we have to go to a further adjudication outside of this hearing. Put it in staff's hands, but um we'll see what we can do up here. So, um, okay, thank you. Folks, all right, Valerie, um, what's your thoughts about this window issue and the project as a whole?
I think this project is very considerate uh throughout. I think it's a good addition and improvement to the family house in regards to how they would like to expand and make the house larger. So I do agree with the proposed changes to the second story. Um, I think it's reason within the reasonable reasonable limits. And I do agree with architectural assessment that this window um for the bedroom, particularly the corner one, uh, will have a minor effect and some vegetation uh might help just to mitigate some potential uh possible views that would be created from it. Um, I don't think it's necessarily uh need to go to the clear story, which obviously will not be as effective for the bedroom. And um considering the applicant's desire to have the master bedroom there, I feel like you know, they do deserve to have some windows there that would look nice in the house as well. So I um, I think based on the image and the way they took um that and the way you know, the site looked when I physically walked it, I feel like uh again, it could be mitigated with some landscaping.
Okay, thank you. All right, understood. Uh, Daniel.
Yeah, um, well, I I I agree that I think the suggested addition uh actually enhances the aesthetic of the house, uh, makes it uh a little more detailed, a little bit more complex. Um, uh, the front yard setback, uh, while a current construction violates the front yard by a few feet, the addition doesn't. Um, side yard minimum would be six feet and they're, they have fifteen feet nine inches, so they're they're really pretty far back from that side property line. Um, FAR is fairly low, not changing the height. Um, uh, uh, and they're pretty far from the adjacent house, um. But the vegetation could disappear. I mean, it could get diseased or drought or something. So I, as much as I often like vegetation as a screening thing, it does have, where there's these kind of uh privacy concerns, it does have that potential problem. Um, and um, I guess, uh, you know, given the way the neighbors at seventy-seven feel, I'm not sure why the two-bedroom windows sill height couldn't be raised up like the one in the bathroom, would still provide light, um, but it would not provide a view out directly without standing on something. And I think aesthetically, that might be better than one window that's two feet high and six feet wide. Um, so uh I would be in favor of that modification if the other members uh supported it.
A wider but.
No, just the two windows raising the sill height to similar to what the one is in the bathroom.
All right, anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Jim.
Eric, can I have a clarification? We didn't get to ask questions, so you mind?
Uh, no, we have to, he's online, yeah, but go ahead, ask the question.
Um, I just wanted to confirm that the two-foot window was a clear-story window. He didn't clarify what height it was at. His suggestion.
Um, I think it's up to us to say what we want to do. We want to raise it to a clear story. So it's it's a normal sill height window, right?
So, no, what he was saying is that that the owner would 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 let a a two-foot by five-foot window in the center of the bed. I'm assuming that's a clear-story window.
For that question, Eric, the question was if the um change to that elevation that you and the owner were proposing um to put a window centered on the wall of the primary bedroom, is that a clear-story window? What is the sill height of that window?
Yes, the head height would be the same as the proposed window, but it would drop down perhaps two and a half feet versus uh the the two side windows, which would drop down four feet. But I would comment that the the visual impact is really at the higher portion of the window. So bringing the sill up uh doesn't really change the the concerns of the neighbor, which was more about privacy. Really how we're mitigating that is with the the shades and the fact that it's a private room that that wants to protect its own privacy. Um, so I don't know if that would be the best solution, raising the sill.
Would would your clients be um open to just making it privacy glass and leaving the windows as they are? Because it's emitting the light that you want from the east. That's all your says in the staff document.
To hear that question, Eric, was you and the owners?
Unfortunately, no, I couldn't hear that.
Um, would would the owners consider making those windows um privacy glass?
I mean, that's the, that's the goal. Uh, they would consider that, I imagine, yes.
All right, uh, thank you. So, uh, comment-wise, um, I mean, I'm not as concerned about the privacy. I think where the properties cited on a lower level than the topography. Um, and and the fact that it's kind of really just looking on on the patio space, it's not looking directly into their living space. I don't really have an issue with the way the windows are now, but if if everybody's amenable to just making a privacy glass, I just leave the design as it is and make privacy glass and everybody's happy. Um, so I can make the fini- the rest of the findings, um, approve the project.
Thank you, Jim. Um, I always think that uh people worry about the view into their room, but uh I don't, I find that most people do not want to look into someone else's living space. They don't want to know. They don't want to see. They will avert their eyes purposely. They don't want to see. Um, but nevertheless, if you're the receiver of that view, you think someone's looking into your space. Um, and uh, it's just a fact, but I think that from my perspective, I think that the windows are uh fine as they are. I would stand with you, Jim, and that keep the windows same size and just put obscure glass in there. So. Your thoughts, Valerie, on that?
I agree. Have you moving or?
Okay, so, anything else that anybody wants to contribute to this item? All right. So, do we have a uh notion of a motion here somewhere? Yeah, we would, we would do it with uh privacy glass. Yeah.
Where is it? My notes comes in the back.
It's right up through the uh.
Whoever gets there first.
There you go.
Uh, in a matter of design review application, PL two-four dash zero zero five seven for a six hundred and four square foot second-story addition to an existing two-story home at seventy-three Granada Drive, I move to approve this application with a modification of obscure obscure glass in the two windows facing facing north on the south elevation.
Two-bedroom windows.
Two-bedroom windows.
Okay.
Second. Missioner Bishoire?
Yes.
Missioner Kenny?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizzo?
Yes.
And Chair Chase.
Yes, all right, thank you. Tracy, do you want to say something?
Decision of the planning commission may be appealed within ten calendar days. Appeal forms are available at Corder Madara Town Hall and the planning division are on our website and an appeal costs three hundred dollars.
All right, thank you. All right, so we're on to the third item on tonight's agenda for which we have a full house here, I think. Um, this is uh four hundred Oakdale Avenue. This is a design review application, PL twenty-three dash zero 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 three for demolition of an existing one-story residence and the construction of a new three thousand square foot two-story residence. Uh, inclusive of an attached one-car garage and associated site improvements, including a swimming pool. So, story poles are up. Um, missionaries, do you have anything you want to announce about this?
I would like to disclose to the commission that I'm acquainted with the applicant, uh, but it will uh not influence my decisions and I will be fair, impartial and objective in making decision to this application.
Thank you. Okay, so anyone else? No. Um, I believe we've all been to the site, um, looked at it. Um, so uh, there is a great staff report here to hear.
Good evening, Chair Chase, uh, members of the commission. Uh, this evening you will be considering a design review application for a new residence at four hundred Oakdale Avenue. The project site is located at four hundred Oakdale Avenue as shown on this slide. It is within the Chapman Park neighborhood. Project site is a rectangular-shaped lot that is seven thousand square feet. Parcel is a corner lot located at Chapman Drive and Oakdale Avenue. Oakdale Avenue is the front property line since it is the shortest street-facing property. Uh, there are two existing single-family residences adjacent to the site. To the east is four oh four Oakdale Avenue and to the north is two thirty Chapman. Additional single-family residences are located to the south across Oakdale Avenue and also to the west across Chapman Drive. Uh, the applicant has made several changes to the original project design. And these were based on feedback of some public comments that were provided at a prior planning uh commission study session on April eleventh. And that study session um was not technically held. However, members of the public were in attendance and so the chair opened up um, the meeting and gave it opportunity to for people to provide comments. The applicant also met with several of the neighbors, which informed some of these design changes. Um, some of the notable changes include the removal of the up upper-level deck, the removal of the outdoor kitchen, um, the reduction of the number of windows on the east elevation from five to three, a modification to the roof pitch and some changes to the exterior materials, which included adding stone and also board and baton siding and then some wa- window, uh, some wood elements above windows and doors. And also the square footage of the upper level was reduced by a hundred square feet and the square footage was added to the lower level. The applicant provided a summary of the changes that were made, which is included as attachment two. And there are some drawings included as attachment three that show these changes as well. The project site is developed with a single-story home, which is three bedrooms, one bath, and it's just under eleven hundred square feet. Uh, there's also an existing carport structure. Uh, the applicant proposes to remove the home and the carport as part of the project. The project site is zoned R one, medium-density residential. Uh, this slide shows um the required development standards, um, what's required per the ordinance and what the applicant is proposing. Uh, the project complies with the various development standards, including setbacks, lot coverage, floor area, height, parking. The proposed height at the tallest point is twenty-nine feet two inches, where a maximum of thirty feet is allowed. The town's ADU ordinance, um, consistent with state law, allows for an eight hundred square foot exceedance of both lot coverage and floor area ratio for purposes of constructing an ADU. The proposed lot coverage inclusive of the ADU is below the forty percent maximum allowed in the zoning district. And the proposed FAR inclusive of the ADU exceeds the FAR by seven hundred and twenty-five feet. And this is consistent with the town's ADU ordinance, since the exceedance is below the eight hundred square feet that is allowed. Uh, the applicant proposes to construct a three thousand square foot two-story home, which is inclusive of a one-car garage. A detached accessory dwelling unit is also proposed in the rear of the property, which is seven hundred and twenty-five square feet. Inconsistent with state law and the town's ADU ordinance, the ADU will not be reviewed as part of this design review application. A building permit is required for the ADU and there is no discretion involved in that process. Uh, the ADU is shown on the plans for reference only. Site improvements are also proposed, which includes a new driveway, walkways, fencing, landscaping. A vehicular access to the site is proposed via a new curb cut and driveway approach from Oakdale Avenue. And um, two, two parking spaces are proposed. Um, one is a covered space in the garage. And the second space is an uncovered space um located in, that's not located within any setbacks. Uh, this slide shows the proposed uh first floor plan. Uh, the first floor is proposed at one thousand eight hundred and ninety-two square feet. It includes one bedroom, one and a half bathrooms, living room, dining room, kitchen, laundry, mudroom and the one-car garage. The proposed second floor is one thousand one hundred and forty-eight square feet. It includes three bedrooms, two bathrooms and an office. Proposed materials include board and baton siding painted a light gray, white facade stone, white trim, dark gray standing seam metal roof, black aluminum windows and cedar wood accents at some of the windows and doors. All proposed materials would be WUI compliant and an actual color materials board is at the dais for the commission. The west elevation faces Chapman Drive. This elevation includes an entry porch and a chimney. Windows of varying shapes and sizes are proposed on this elevation. Four windows are proposed. Four windows are proposed on the lower level, which include two at the living room and two at the kitchen. In addition, uh, the main entry is proposed on this elevation. There are also two glass doors in the dining room that would provide access from this room um, to the side yard. Uh, five windows are proposed on the upper level, which include three in the bedrooms, one in the bathroom and one in the office. And the maximum height at of this elevation is twenty six. South elevation faces Oakdale Avenue. Uh, the garage opening is visible along this facade. The south elevation includes three different building components. And the garage and the mudroom extend from the primary facade. And the garage and mudroom are located closest to the front property line. Uh, the setback is fifteen feet, one inch, where fifteen foot setback is required. Four windows are proposed on this elevation, which includes one in the mudroom on the lower level. And on the upper level, there is a window proposed in the bedroom, in the bathroom and then in a closet. And the maximum height of this elevation is twenty six. The north elevation faces uh, the backyard. Uh, the lower level of this elevation includes an eighteen foot long nano door and this provides access from the kitchen and family room area to an outdoor patio. A wood trellis is also proposed above the nano door. And one window is proposed on the upper level in the bathroom. And the maximum height of this elevation is twenty seven feet. The east elevation faces the neighboring property at four oh four Oakdale Avenue. Five windows are proposed, proposed on the lower level, which includes two in the garage, two in a bedroom and one in a kitchen. Three windows are proposed on the upper level, which includes uh, one in a bathroom and then two in a bedroom. Um, in response to concerns expressed by the neighboring property, the number of windows on the upper level of the east elevation was reduced from originally five was proposed, um, to three windows. And the maximum height on this elevation is twenty nine feet two. Uh, the landscape plan shows that nine trees will be planted. Uh, this includes five crate myrtles and then four magnolia trees. And the applicant has already planted a total of eight trees in the medium strip on Chapman Drive and these trees are located between the existing sidewalk sidewalk and then Chapman. Uh, the applicant intends to plant an additional three trees once the existing driveway is removed. And the proposed or the trees are all twenty four inch box trees. Uh, plants are also proposed in other areas of the project site. Variety of plants are proposed in the southwestern portion of the site. And in addition, planting is proposed along the western property boundary between the fence and the site. The applicant introduced the project to their neighbors via a mailing. The letter included a QR code, um, which had a link to view a three D model and project plans. The letter also announced a Zoom meeting in which neighbors would have an opportunity to ask questions, express concerns and learn more about the project. Uh, the letter that was mailed is included as attachment four to the staff. Uh, the applicant met with several, several neighbors, which included the tenants of four oh four Oakdale Avenue, the owners of four oh eight Oakdale Avenue and the owners of three twenty eight Oakdale Avenue. Uh, this, the town received several letters of support, which are designated with the blue dot on this map. In addition, we received a comment letter from the tenants of four oh four Oakdale Avenue expressing concerns with the project related to a loss of views and privacy and also concerns with construction noise impacts. Uh, that letter is included as attachment seven to the staff report. The town also received a letter from their attorney representing the owners of four oh four Oakdale Avenue. Uh, that letter was um, emailed to the commission. It's also available for you on the dais and a copy has been um, posted to the website. Uh, to approve the project, uh, the planning commission must make the required eight design review findings. A staff believes that the most relevant findings for the commission to consider is in the evaluation of the project are findings three and four as highlighted on this screen. Findings, finding three states that the project will not significantly and adversely affect the views, sunlight or privacy of any nearby residences will provide adequate buffering between residential and non-residential uses. Otherwise is in the best interest of the public health, safety and general. And finding four states, the structure, site plan and landscaping are in scale and harmonious with the existing and future development adjacent to the site and in the vicinity and with landforms and vegetations in the vicinity of the site and landscaping shall be based on water conservation design. Uh, staff visited the property at four oh four Oakdale Avenue to, to view uh, the proposed project from this property. The proposed residence at four hundred Oakdale Avenue is located closest to the neighbor to the east at four oh four Oakdale Avenue. The existing home at four oh four Oakdale Avenue is a one story home with the loft that is oriented to the west. The west elevation of four oh four Oakdale Avenue has two bay windows, one in the living room and one in the dining room. There is a third window on the west elevation of four oh four Oakdale Avenue in the changing room, which is off of the primary bedroom. Uh, this slide shows a picture or of the view from the, the living room area. And in the foreground, uh, the view includes greenery and vegetation. And in the, the background of the view is a ridge line of the Christmas tree hill, which is shown in blue. And then further beyond is Mount Tamapai as shown. Uh, most properties on the four hundred block of Oakdale all are developed with a two story home. Uh, this map shows a one story homes with an orange dot, two story homes with a blue dot and then a three story home with a red dot. Ten of the twelve lots on the north side of Oakdale Avenue between Chapman and East, Eastman are developed with a two story. Uh, the, the project site and the adjacent property at four oh four Oakdale Avenue um, are the two homes that are developed with a one story home. The grade of the majority of lots on this side of Oakdale Avenue are situated in such a way that lots are below the street and so viewed from the street, um, the two story homes appear to be one story homes. And on the south side of Oakdale Avenue of the ten homes, there is one, one story home, eight two story homes and one three story. And the properties on the south side of Oakdale Avenue slope upward. Uh, so the entire home is visible from the street of these lots. A staff also looked at the sizes of living area in the vicinity of the project site. Uh, there is a large variation in living area of homes in the immediate area. The living area of the existing home, um, or the, the living area of the project site is the smallest um, home on this block of Oakdale at one thousand and eighty six square feet. And the largest is four twelve Oakdale, which has a living area of three thousand two hundred and fifty eight. Of the twenty two homes on this block, nine homes have a living area between one thousand and two thousand square feet. Eleven homes are between two thousand and one and three thousand square feet. And then two homes are larger than three thousand square feet. And those two homes, um, pictures are shown on this slide. So staff recommends that the commission determine via a motion whether findings required by section eighteen thirty oh seven oh can be made for the design review application. Um, staff recommends that the commission include in its motion direction for staff to return with the appropriate resolution. And the commission may also elect to provide direction to the applicant so that they may return to the commission for future consideration. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Martha. Um, okay. So now we will find out who's going to uh, make a presentation for this project and who do we have? Who's going to start and?
Ivan, um, we've. Yeah, we've allowed, I don't know if he, looks like he's rejoined. Um, you should be able to have permissions to unmute Ivan now and I think share your screen. Let us know if you have issues.
Okay.
Hi, so who are you?
Hi, my name's David. Uh, I'm the owner of G Design, G Family Construction, um, with my brother, John. Uh, we've been working on this plan. Oh, first of all, thank you so much for hearing our project and uh, we're really happy to be here. We've been designing this project for over two years now. We've worked for a year and three quarters with Phil and he was absolutely wonderful. We met with him seven different times. We scheduled a preliminary meeting because he recommended us to, we almost never do that. Um, and unfortunately he didn't, we didn't get the information of when the meeting was. My brother was on vacation. I was having a baby. And so we had to cancel. We thought it was the next week on the eighteen. Anyways, uh, regardless, I have put together a fly around video um, of our newest version of this home. We've been through several versions. Um, uh, with the last meeting that we weren't allowed or were able to attend to, uh, sorry. Um, we got the letter and all the notes and went back in with Phil and did a major redesign off of some of the major uh, pieces that were the complaints. Obviously it's a two story house. There's no way for us to put a one story house on this prod, property without making it uh, less than twenty five hundred square feet. So, or, or close to that. Um, I think that our design, we went in trying to be very conscious of the neighbor of four oh four Oakdale. Um, knowing that our side yard setback is five feet and we made it seven to try to push even further. Um, I'm going to go ahead and let's start with slide number one, Ivan. Uh, sorry, go to slide number two. This is just a. Um, we went through, yeah, can you zoom in on two? We were just trying to show the difference between the adjustments that we made from um, the first models on the left and the second models on the right. Which basically shows the difference between uh, the two designs where we tried to bring the top story in. Um, and uh, and reduce the, the length of the building, which unfortunately created mass in the middle, but because we have a ten foot interior side yard setback on one side and we were trying to give as much room to the neighbor, uh, in a, uh, extensive site set, setback on the four oh four Oakdale side and give them backyard views and front yard views. Everything ended up in the middle, second story. We're trying to create the bedrooms uh, all together on the top and uh, a guest suite on the bottom. So this is just some of the differences I, I. Did you guys, do you guys read that? The like our whole list of all our changes? Yeah, so I'm not going to go through them one by one, but basically, like I said, the goal was to shrink everything and you can see on the floor plan, uh, the existing version, you walk up into a big mezzanine hallway. We shrunk that down and made it a, a, a tight hallway and pulled the addition in. So to try to provide a view, a better view from the back. Um, I really felt like on this project, we really collaborated with Phil to try to get the best design we could with the parameters that we had. Uh, go ahead and go to the next slide, Ivan. Uh, you can go to the elevations. Yeah, great. Um, the elevations just show the material change. One of the comments Phil came back with was he didn't feel like the materials really fit the neighborhood. So we went back into redesign and did something very traditional with the board and baton and the uh, stone, which would allow like a creeping fig or something like that to grow on it. You can see the red lines of the mass reduction on the top floor where we pushed that bedroom way in. We also removed the window from the backside and put it on the front side to further create more privacy for the uh, neighbor at four oh four Oakdale and switch the other windows so that he had more privacy. You can see there's three big windows and then down to two. Go ahead and go to the next slide, Ivan. Um, this is just a map showing houses that are larger than our house in the immediate area of uh, four hundred Oakdale. So we put that together for you and the bus stop, this is a list of all the changes we made, which when you start changing one thing, it leads into everything else. Unfortunately, these designs are very tight. And if we go and we make changes, we literally spent four and a half months in redesign to try to pull the top deck off and pull the bedroom in and make it so that the kitchen wasn't, or the outdoor kitchen wasn't on the neighbor's side because he was complaining about noise. Uh, go to the next slide, Ivan. Um, you can see from the sun study, the sun is kind of like runs along Oakdale, which is very fortunate for us with the shade study. We felt like the impact um, was very minimal. Uh, the worst impact is in December, of course, when the sun's very low. And basically at four PM, this, the, the shadow starts coming over his fence. Um, one of the nice things about his house is that he's set back pretty far from our house. So thirty one feet is the distance between the two houses, which is basically a whole house between the houses. So um, and there is a lot of existing vegetation there that's pretty tall. So this is that we did a little picture of the worst existing. And you, you can see it's not even shady in his houses and sunset is in two hours. So it's three PM in December, sunset's at five PM. So the sun is really low. Go ahead and go to the next slide. Uh, we went up on the, on the roof and took a picture of where we thought the windows would be looking out of the bedroom. This is the view out of the bedroom windows. Um, you can see that there's not much of a view except for the roof. I liked uh, Peter's comment. I agree. Um, nobody's trying to stand at their window and look into your window and, and you know, reduce the privacy for, for both ways. And you go to the next slide. Uh, go to the one that shows the distance between the houses, Ivan. Yeah. So this is just a little map. Can you zoom in? It's just a map we put together, four hundred Oakdale.
This is thirty one feet right here. This is twenty four feet. So these are, I think that's where the, the office or block is. And you can see here, we tried to shrink this in as much as possible to give light there and light there from the front.
And we had originally designed a two pitched roof. Uh, because we thought it would let more sun pass. So our height limit was actually a little bit lower. But we realized that if we didn't do that two pitch roof, it reduced the mass by bringing down the, the silk, the plate height on the second story. So the existing house is a few feet off the ground. Um, in the story pole plan, I don't know if you saw the story pole plan, but on the backside of this house, starting at the plate height, there's only between five foot six and seven feet taller. And so our goal was to try to keep those outside walls lower, so it didn't look like a lot of mass. And I know we have a few double stacked walls because of that ten foot setback and we were trying to give as much space, like I said, to four oh four and stay as far away from that fence as possible. Um, and like I said to Phil, I felt like I was trying to design this house between a rock and a hard place the whole time. Uh, but he gave us great advice and I feel like our transition from the house before, we removed the outdoor kitchen, we removed the upper deck, we tried to listen to um, the comments that were in the previous meeting, even though we weren't there unfortunately. And like I said, made a lot of design changes. Um, I was wondering if I could save some of my time for rebuttal at the end, if that's possible.
Yeah, of course. Um, there will be an opportunity to bond a commentary about the design.
Right.
That happens. Um, how long have you guys had this property?
Almost four years, yeah.
Okay.
And it's the smallest house, by the way. When she said there's a house that's thousand square feet, that is the house. It's the smallest house in the street. And and we bought it with the intention of building my brother's, you know, home. He lives in Port of Madera. His kids go to Neil Cummings. Community and this is his street, so.
Okay, is, uh, there anyone else that wants to make a presentation on behalf of the project tonight or is it just you? So.
He's going to say something when it's his turn, but no, it's just me.
Okay, for you. But so then when is your, your turn is now.
Wait, I know that.
That'll be public. Yeah, that'll be, there's a, there's a, excuse me, there's a public comment section. There's a, there's a, excuse me, there's a public comment section, but if you're the owner of the property, you should make your statement now and then you'll have an opportunity to chime in and public comment. But if you want to say something about the project now, then do so. So. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm not good with fly of the, you know, bill speeches, so I wrote something down. Spent some time reviewing it. I just want to thank you for hearing our plea tonight. I would like to spend extend a special thanks to Martha, the senior planner, who's been outstanding throughout this entire process. So responsive and helpful and just like, you know, we spent a lot of time with Phil. But Martha took over the reins and just really, really helpful along the way. She has partnered with us to develop a plan that minimizes the impact on our neighborhood while creating a beautiful home for our family. So thank you, Martha. You may not be aware, but we have gone through many meetings and revisions over the last three years to get to this point. And I hope you can appreciate the dedication that we have shown in creating an exceptional design. Along the way, we have made countless compromises and considerations for the sake of our neighbors. And I hope they are evident in this plan. If I may, I'd also like to share a bit about my family. This is my wife, Ashley here. And our two children, Calvin and Indigo. We're a growing family in Corder Bndera here, and this is why we're investing in this neighborhood. Over the last four years, we've also invested heavily in this community with both our time and resources. We volunteered for and organized local events, supported our schools through funding and free construction projects, worked within the P T O and have done our best to lend a helping hand to our neighbors and any that we can. To honor our neighbors' opinions, we have also spent many weekends walking door to door and listening to their concerns, comments and praise for our project. And you can see Martha show kind of an idea of all the neighbors that approved of our project. And I spent three weekends going door to door and really got to know the neighborhood, which was amazing. And met some really cool people. Our, our goal has always been to create a home that not only fits into the neighborhood, but enhances it. It's unfortunate and disheartening that the owner of four oh four Oakdale, who is completely absent from this community, as he lives in Florida, is using high-powered lawyers over there to try and prevent our growing family from investing in our neighborhood and creating a beautiful home to raise our children. Though we've made many attempts to interact with him, the only feedback that we have received is our compromises are not good enough. It is clear through these minimal communications that the only way we will be able to appease him is by building a one-story home. It is unfortunately not feasible based on the size of our lot and allowable lot coverage. This brings me to the specific issue of being deliberated over tonight, the impact of the neighbor's view. There was view is almost completely obscured by vegetation that he himself has planted. He labels it a cherished part of his rental property. And in regards to the privacy concerns from the backyard, that we have made many design compromises, including removing the kitchen and the upper deck and on and on. It seems those are also not good enough. I wonder if the owner of four oh four Oakdale might be better suited owning a rental property that backs up against open space rather than a suburban community where people gather and children play. Instead of a neighborhood where homes are almost within reaching distance from one another. With all that said, I want to emphasize that we have put in the utmost effort in our design to minimize the impact on the adjacent property through the means described in our discussion before. I want to thank you for your time and your consideration and thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So I'm gonna say that that would then conclude the applicant's presentation of either plans or design and commentary. So with that said, commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant at this point? Do you want to bring anybody back up to get them some questions answered before we open it up to public comment?
I had some questions for the planner and for the applicant.
Absolutely.
Could we start off with the planning?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak to.
Call you up, alright.
We'll call you up. So just, just to be clear for everybody in the audience, we don't have a historic designation or preservation requirement in Corder Madera?
We do not, not have a historic preservation district.
Okay, and what, what are the ordinances for noise and pool equipment and loud noises like pool and play in it? Like playing in the pool. Is it like ten o'clock or is it like? Does it align with the noise ordinance of the town?
There is a noise ordinance in chapter, or chapter five, three, six of, of the code. And it regulates things such as pool equipment. Cannot exceed a certain decibel above ambient noise. And it does not address children playing. That's not I think it is part of, part of what's included in the, the noise ordinance.
Isn't there something about ten o'clock, like loud noises after ten o'clock or something strange like that?
That's municipal code.
Well, it was, I'm just trying to address some of the things that were in, in the attorney's letter about noise and just.
We can look into that. Nothing that I know off the top of my head.
Okay. And, and the pool equipment, we have, we do have a planning requirement of being ten feet from the fence, or is it just the noise?
So the code states that pools and associated equipment should be ten feet from property lines. It can be less than that, however you need designer view approval. So the pool as proposed is less than ten feet to the east side property boundary. I think the pool equipment is just under six feet. And then the pool itself is just over six feet from that east property boundary. So that's part of the design review application to reduce those distances to less than ten feet.
Okay. And there are two other adjacent properties at two thirty Chapman and four oh five Oakdale. Were there any comments or communications regarding this project from either one of those names?
The town has not received any comments from four oh five Oakdale Avenue. I believe the, the applicants reached out to them, so he can provide additional information if he had any conversations.
Okay. And then would you mind clarifying the communication between four oh four Oakdale and the applicants? Was it all done via letter? Was there not, was there not a design meeting to try to kind of come up with compromises?
The applicants met with the tenants of four oh four Oakdale, I believe, on several occasions and also visited the, the property and looked at the story poles from four oh four Oakdale's property. It's my understanding the applicant has not spoken with the property owner, but has, has had conversations with the attorney representing the property owner who's here this evening. And the applicant did provide the plans to the owner of four oh four Oakdale Avenue and comments were provided from the firm representing, representing the owner.
Okay. That's all I have for planning. You want me to continue with the with the applicants or just?
Excuse me for not jumping in with that sooner. We'll break this up and we'll see if the other commissioners also have questions for staff. So Daniel, do you have any questions for staff at this point?
Not at this time.
Okay, and Valerie?
I do. It's some historical process for this project have ever, has, has it been considered to reverse the lot and relax some ordinance in regards to the zoning?
So any reduction to setbacks would require a variance. And as the commissioner knows, it's very challenging to make variance findings. So that was not something that, that was discussed.
And if something like that to be discussed, would that require a separate hearing to provide the variances?
Yeah, I mean typically, you know, an applicant would include a variance request as part of their application and it would be evaluated by staff. Variance findings are very challenging to make because you need to demonstrate there's something unique about this lot that doesn't apply to other lots in the area, which is, you know, it's a very high bar to make. And in this case, a lot of these lots are around the same size. Very similar in dimensions. So I don't know if that's something that.
How similar is that to the lot that was, I don't remember exact address, but it's down the street where we did relax the ordinance and provided the variance for that?
Are you talking about two oh four Chapman?
Correct, but it's in the same.
Yeah, so that is a little bit different and I can have Tracy speak to it to provide additional context. In that case, the reverse corner lot applied, which I don't know if the commissioner remembers that discussion because it was adjacent to a key lot. So the, the code allows for a reduction to the rear yard setback. In that case, you basically mimic the side yard setback of the adjacent property. This, however, is not, does not fall into that same category per the zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that noise ordinance results in saying that you can be fifty-five D B at ten feet from the property line, more or less. That's how most communities rate that noise. Sound meter, if you're ten feet from the property line, you gotta be fifty-five D B, which is ambient noise. People talking. Anyway, that's what I know about that in most communities. I don't know where it states it in our records if at all.
Yeah, our code has a little bit more of an ambiguous statement in it. So I'll, I'll just read this for you. This is section nine dash thirty-six dash zero five zero. And this is for nighttime general noise regulations. It is unlawful for any person without justification to make or continue or cause to permit to be made or to continued between the hours of ten P M, six A M daily, any excessive or offensive noise that disturbs the peace or quiet of any neighborhood or that is unreasonably disturbing to a person or ordinary sensitivity, sensitivities residing in the area. And then it goes on to state some standards as to how that section would be levied. And I will say this is incredibly difficult to enforce because we would have to have some ability to to see if that noise actually was created and to measure it.
Somebody on, we'll call standby. Great. Okay.
Well, I, I think the equipment has a rating on it.
Yeah.
Right. So I think that the applicant could probably provide the building department with some sort of rating on the heat pumps and the and, and.
They can, right. So Jim asked about four oh five. No comment. Right. It's across the street to the south. Do you know if any outreach was made to four oh five?
I'll let the applicant answer that question.
Okay, so now we'll go to ask the applicant questions, right? So if you want to stand up and start with Jim again, who's got a good list.
How high is the existing house? There's no existing elevations in here. I'm just curious for.
I don't know off the top of my head.
Ivan, are you still on?
Uh, yeah, I'm here. Give me a second. It's twenty-seven feet, three inches and three quarters. So twenty-seven feet and four inches.
About the existing house height of the
Ridge line.
Of the grid, roof line, ridge line.
Existing house. Give me a second.
No problem.
So it's twelve feet, six inches.
Twelve feet, six inches?
Yeah, maybe a little more around twelve, twelve feet, eight inches, something around maybe ten maximum.
Do we know at what point the ridge line is impacted? Because it's really hard to tell from the windows exactly, like if you were to go to a different roof line, pitch to lower the roof at all. Is it? Is any two-story structure gonna block that ridge line at where, where it is?
Is any two-story structure gonna block the ridge line?
Correct. Like if, if it was allowed to be a two-story.
Out of his window?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, he's looking at the walls. So that picture you showed, he's looking at the walls, which like I said, we brought down. We actually designed this house to be a slab on grade to make it as low as possible, which it steps down from the garage and it steps down from the bedroom on his side because the grade is cross-sloped. So we tried to keep those walls as low as possible by designing the, the house on a slab. So the, the side profile, I think Ivan, could you pull up the neighbor's elevation? And he's still here?
Yeah, well, the view is up. It's, it's not like straight at it. So my question is, is, was there a study done to kind of figure out where the ridge line was to determine the height of the building?
We actually went over to the neighbor's house in conceptual plan. And had our.
I have a little correction from my colleague. It's actually thirteen feet and one inch existing house.
Ivan, can you show the side elevation?
Uh, yeah. Uh, but I don't have his neighbor. Give me a second.
Maybe. There you go.
What is that management saying on?
I don't know if he can hear you. You, you gotta be at the microphone.
John, can, can you repeat? Because I can.
Oh, sorry. Ivan, I need to know the side. Yeah, that page. Yeah, go to the right. Next drawing over, the new one. Yeah, measure that, that wall from there, from the plate height down. So from the roof height down.
You know, said.
So when she showed the picture in the staff report of looking out that window, they're like standing at that window, taking a picture up and it's looking at the wall.
So it's twenty-eight feet and eight inches.
That's the ceiling height. I want to know the wall height on the outside exterior elevation.
Okay.
There you go. Other side.
I, I get the gist of it. I get the gist of it.
Martha had a, a slide up, I believe, that showed you had a slide that showed the height of P M inside the photo with a red line and the Christmas tree hill and a blue line. And that was just above the existing, above the existing rooftop.
Well, yeah, there's, it's probably like seven feet into our second floor.
I, I'm trying to determine if, even if it was a one-story building, would, would a roof, a new roof line block that view? So that, you know, that's, that's a big question. Cause if you guys wind up doing a, a one-story in the end or, or a two-story is, is the roof gonna always block the ridge line?
Yeah.
And so it's super important because it, you know, I mean, you go to a one-story building and it, it's got a nine-foot plate height and a, and a six and twelve roof. I mean, are we talking about, we're gonna have the same discussion about about light air and?
Yeah, I think there's a two-twelve roof on there now.
Okay.
It's basically flat.
What other questions do you have for the applicant here?
For the applicant, I I don't have anymore. I have some for the, for the neighbor when that goes over. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kenny, are you ready to talk or ask questions of the applicant?
Not at this time.
Okay, Valerie?
I just have a question in regards to the design consideration. I think the, the major concern for your neighbor is that view that is looking right in the middle, right? Where the biggest mass of the house is. And historically speaking, again, have you considered the design that would shift the second story closer to the, over the garage? And historically speaking, again, um, have you considered the design that would shift the second story closer to the over the garage area? So that so basically coming to your corner a little bit, maybe like four feet in to over the porch and over the garage area. I feel like that potentially could mitigate some of the issues and obstructions from your neighbor's window.
Yeah, when we designed it, we actually went over there in the beginning. The best view was out of that front living room. And that's what we were trying to preserve by pushing the front back. And so we pushed it back and then we redesigned everything and pushed it back more to try to give that front view out of that front window because we knew second story addition is going to be blocking their house. I mean, every house on that street is lined up. His house happens to be further back than everyone else is, which made it another thing really difficult for us to try to accommodate him as much as possible. And all we could do is mask the middle and try to give him a front and a back view.
It's also going to block light coming. Sun comes across the hill. So
Yeah.
As the mass goes forward, it blocks more of the light coming in.
Absolutely. Which is why when you can see on December twentieth, you can see in the shade study, we're still not hitting his house. It's actually just starting to hit the back of his house in the shade study. So you can see right there, if we moved all that forward, then it would be shading the whole back of his house. And that's each part of the year. And so we had initially started with it further to the back. Um, but the issue with that is when we met with the the person who actually lives there, they said, we have this great view from our backyard. That's where we hang out. The back of their house is this little teeny can't remember if it's an office or what it is, but it's not like a main master bedroom.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, Valerie.
I have no more questions. Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
What what would be the issue for you if you flip the floor, the plan so that the house was on the north side of the property? The yard was in the middle and the ADU was on um Oakdale. And the only thing you'd have to change would be the garage entrance would have to be off of Chapman.
I mean, that's a whole redesign for starting over. Basically, you know, like I said, we've been we worked with Phil for over two years on this project from the very beginning in conceptual designs. Went over to the neighbor's house in the very beginning to try to accommodate them. Designed the the kids bedroom on the second floor in the back because it's the least privacy, you know, risk for us. Put the other master bedroom where they're both going to be in their master bedroom on the other side to the street. I mean, we tried to think of every little thing in this, put all the big openings to the back so that there wasn't a bunch of windows to the neighbor unless it was screened. You know, he's got a ten, ten, twelve foot screen that grows up to fifteen feet. It's a it's a huge green screen. Our plan is to try to keep that because it gives us privacy for him and them. But the whole bottom row of windows, you can't even see anything from the neighbor's yard. We have a a slide that shows the windows and there's no view. So basically, we have two windows that are thirty feet away from that house that are a kid's bedroom window.
So I appreciate I've been involved in discussions that you've had with staff and I see the changes you've made uh which fundamentally don't solve the view problem. Uh, so I I so you didn't answer my question. I'm I'm asking beside redesign, are there other technical issues that would prevent you from moving the house north?
You know, I you're asking me, I spent three years designing that project. You're asking me right here without thinking about it. So can I think of one, I could probably give you a list of fifty if you give me a week, but today, right now, no, other than Oakdale Avenue is the address. And if we stick the house in the back, it's the opposite. So.
Also, there's no parking. Um, I have to go past the ADU to get to our house and our house would feel more like the back house versus the main house.
And there's also a twenty five foot yard setback in the back house, which would kill the ADU. So there's that too. The ADU is in the back twenty five feet, which is exactly why they have that rule is that you can get that ADU in there and it gives a screen to your neighbors and then creates a yard in the middle. And that's why we designed it that way is if if we had to move the house back, it would create a twenty five foot yard in the back. We're basically trying to carve a yard out for that house because of the ten foot side yard setback and get a yard in the ten foot side yard setback because we tried to give two extra feet in three feet to the neighbor to get off the fence line, which to me, when I design houses and I've designed a bunch of housing quarter modern, been through design review, there is always an impact when you're building a house next to the neighbor. And there's sometimes a view impact, just like unfortunately here, but we did try very hard to to relieve that as much as possible. So.
All right, that's it. Daniel, okay. I think um at this point, um, we will close this presentation portion of it. We will go for public comment. So I think that we have some people here like to speak. So um, we will have a timer going for three minutes. For anyone who wishes to speak, uh, we will take online commentary after the people in the room stand up. Um, I'd like to keep this moving along so that um, there's always somebody waiting to go up to the podium. If uh you're going to speak, so please, let's start with someone who wants to get up and start the public comment. You have three minutes. Okay, who's going to do that? Okay.
Uh, my name is Casey Craning. I'm Chapman Park homeowner and resident. And just wanted to voice my support for the project tonight. Um, pick the scale and landscaping and just the the general the design of the house will be a great impact um for the positive for the neighborhood. So.
Okay, what's your address, Katie?
At four two nine Tamil Pies.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Hello, my name is Patrick Horn. I'm at four three three Tamil Pies Drive. Um, thank you guys for listening to the Grabams for this project. We also are raising our children here in Chapman Park and believe that this project uh is going to be beneficial to uh our neighborhood. Uh, it allows people to, again, create roots uh in the neighborhood. Uh, again, for children versus uh people that do not live in the neighbor or do not live in the community that may own homes here but may not be participating um in all the things that we do here. So we are in support of of this project.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi there. Um, I'm Julie Channing. I live at four thirty five Oakdale with my husband Nate. Um, and I just wanted to, on behalf of both of us, also express our support for the Grabams and the project. Um, and and just let you know while we aren't directly um, you know, impacted by virtue of we're halfway down the block. We have a very special street. Um, it's a very community oriented group of neighbors who look out for each other. Um, you know, it is a village in many regards. And since the Grabams have moved into the neighborhood, they've been such a wonderful addition. Um, we've co-hosted events together for um the school. They're very involved in the community. We're so grateful that they are um neighbors of ours and we'd love to see them continue to grow their family here. So um, consider this our support. We also live right next door to the three story house um that is in the middle of the block. And so, you know, I can attest that having larger homes next to us um on on this particular block just adds value to everybody's homes and property values. So um, I see it as a positive.
Thank you very much. All right, we got a lot of people here. So stand up. Yes.
Um, I'm Allison Bricker. We're two thirty Chapman. So we're directly north of the property. Um, and we have no objections. We're thrilled about it and excited to have them in the neighborhood. Um, and I think our property is probably affected also by views and light, and it's not an issue for us.
All right, thank you.
Hi. Uh, my name is Vince Pasquini. I I don't live right in the neighborhood, but just wanted to comment that I feel like the the finishes are very tasteful with the cedar trim, uh, the siding, metal roof and the stonework. I'm also very thoughtful to incorporate ADU uh in a state and city that needs more housing. So I I think it's very well thought through design.
Okay, thank you. All right.
A couple of new pictures. All right, did you get enough copies?
Okay.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay. It's a little, the new place is lovely, but the sound in the back has has been a little challenging.
Yeah, you have to get close to the mic. It's hard.
Is that close enough? Yeah, great. Um, so I'm Dana Dean and I do represent Eli the Gauges, Mr. And Mrs. Gage from four oh four Oakdale. Um, I want would like I wanted to start by thanking everyone involved for how hard they've worked. I really appreciate your attention last year. Really appreciate your attention this year. Uh, from there, I really wanted to cover, uh, I've said a lot of words on the paper that really do have meaning in terms of general planning consistencies and other very specific and serious problems. But I wanted to get more basic tonight. And to start, I want to say the problems with the building, the problems with the project really come down to it is too high, very high and too close. And the picture's way too close to the house that is oriented right towards it. Part of the problem is the setback issue, and I I appreciate the characterization, but if you look at that was given earlier. But if you look at the pictures and the other pictures that I've submitted, it's actually quite clear. The view is really a problem. The view will be destroyed. But also this massive structure is going to be in front of these people's house. Um, I can go into a lot of detail, but it's it's very plain that what I really need to detail is these people. Um, the Gauges lived in this house for over thirty years. They lived in it and loved it. They recently moved to Florida to take care of Mrs. Gage's two elderly parents who are in their late nineties, ninety seven and ninety nine. The Gauges have every intention of returning to the home that they love. Uh, I heard from many neighbors that they had been characterized as absentee landlords who were only concerned about money. That's absolutely false. They care about the home that they have loved for decades. They care about the destruction of a view that has been present for over a hundred years. And um, they care about the community as well. They raised their children here. I'm sorry, you know, I've been doing this a long time. I don't like I like to play. I'm okay. You're okay. I don't like to attack folks. But what has been said about Eli Gage is gross and shouldn't be a factor in your considerations. You might remember that he actually did attend the meeting from uh last year and he would be here tonight, except they just lost their house in a one of those tornadoes that came off of um the hurricane. So um, I'm happy to discuss more details. I see I'm running out of time. Hopefully you've had a chance to review all the information I presented. But our ask for you, and by the way, we are absolutely available to talk to the the developers. And while they say they can't build less than a two story house, that's just not true. Even the the floor area that they've covered on the first floor of the house and the ADU that they've added add up to about twenty five hundred square feet. In my world, twenty five hundred square feet is a good house. So um, that's my presentation. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Um, there are some questions I suspect for you. Uh, Jim.
Um, so I I just want to be clear. So if if a one story structure was redesigned and it blocked the view, are we going to be sitting in the same spot? Because the reason I asked about the existing house is it's really, really severely under it's a two a two twelve pitch roof with eight foot ceilings is really kind of, you know, substandard for today's for today's building. So if if we come back with it with another, if applicants came back with a one story uh presentation and it still blocked the view, are we still going to be sitting here talking about the same issues?
Uh, there's a couple of factors. First, uh, one thing is the setback for sure. And and as the story poles went up and um, it became more and more apparent just how um oppressive that's going to be. And remember the that they're basically that house is going up in their these folks' front yard
Mm hmm.
because of the way the homes are oriented. So it's kind of a special circumstance in that way. Um, but so the setback will, uh, there's a lot of factors. This is a lawyer's answer. It depends. There's a lot of factors. And if if you're asking me if they put a twenty foot um twenty foot high home right exactly where they are now, that could be problematic, but I don't know that's going to happen. And I I absolutely don't think it's necessary. Um, based on my my math, they there are many ways that they could orient those homes and even Commissioner Kenny's point about or I'm sorry, maybe Commissioner, the point about um flipping the switch, right? And we even looked at move it over the other direction. And it 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 can't go without notice that they did add eight hundred, uh, excuse me, seven hundred eighteen square foot square feet of first floor use with the ADU. They could put that elsewhere.
In the literature or in the readings that that were communications, there was talk about the most important area was the backyard. Is is that the case? Because I mean, you I mean, we've got windows in living room, the dining room, office, and then we've got the backyard. It's basically the whole lot. So is there an opportunity anywhere on this lot that would satisfy the neighbors as far as to put an addition?
I'm sorry, one more time.
You know, is there any sighting of a second story that would be adequate for the neighbors considering the back? Like, what's the most important area of the house?
So the most important view I do think is towards the back of backyard.
The backyard.
Although the little, well, there I don't, I can't, I don't know that there is a most important. I do know that it's problematic to be standing on your front porch and having this thing in front of you. Right? So if you're asking me, did if they go up to sixteen feet? Is that what you're asking?
Oh, no.
It would depend. We, you know, we could do.
I'm I'm just asking the sighting. I'm kind of addressing um um, the issue of flipping the house, which it it probably won't work out for the setbacks, but I'm just curious because um, I think if the house was in the backyard of you know, facing the backyard, that we would have an issue with the the deck view at that point.
I don't know.
Okay.
I'd have to look at it to be honest with you. I don't, it really, it depends, right? If you're asking me if you just lift this two story twenty nine foot two twen- two inch building over, is that going to solve the problem? I don't know that it would. No. I don't know that it would. I think it mostly solves the problem. It'd be a good thing to look at.
So if if this was to go to a redesign, would the applicants sit down with with would would your clients sit down with an with with the applicants and actually like help them design this? Because if I don't know if we'll go there or not, but I mean,
Yes.
we we haven't, they haven't had any communication and and these applicants have spent a lot of money. They're shooting darts at at what they can do.
I have to say, I believe that's a mischaracterization of what went on. It's correct that they didn't meet face to face. It is not correct that we have not been communicating with them. We've been communicating. And the response I got to my comments was, we're going to build a two story house. So um, but I don't want to get, you know,
Right.
These folks are going to live next to each other. So that to answer the your question, the the answer is yes. We would probably have to do it long distance. Mr. Gage is taking care of his in-laws and his wife's in a wheelchair and they just lost their home. So yes, we probably could.
What I'm hearing is that uh the revamped design would be open to discussion and consideration. Is it a certainty? No, not at all. So but they would talk about a different.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, there's there. That's an that's absolute affirmative. The the logistics of all of it at this very. The, the logistics of all of it at this very moment are, are challenging, but I actually have full authority to. But yes, absolutely, we would.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Mr. Kenny, do you have anything for the attorney for the 404? Not certain, maybe.
I think Jim asked some good questions, so I'm, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Valerie.
Um, I same, Jim has asked the question that I had in mind, but I do want to clarify that it sounds like the applicants went through major redesigning throughout the course to satisfy the needs of your client. Um, I was, I'm just wondering if in the course of these conversations, have there any been any kind of coming to the aha moment and saying like, okay, maybe, maybe we're going to consider this? Or was it always a denial for the second story in general?
I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure I understand your question. First, there, there weren't conversations. I'll just say that. There were communications, email.
Okay.
Review of the plans, more emails. So just to be clear, I, I didn't actually have, uh, a lot of conversations with the applicants. Um, are you, are you asking if there's a compromise that could be hatched?
Correct. Was there, was there a communication about a possible outcome that would satisfy your client?
Yes.
Do you mind disclosing what that was?
I think you actually have the comments that I sent, I, I sent, we reviewed the plan. Actually, we got the plan that still had the JDU in it. Uh, for some reason, but in any case, we reviewed that plan and I gave them comments on it. Is that what, um, it's.
There are comments in the staff report that you made, um, uh, and in the history. But, um, they, uh, I won't characterize that, but there were, there were their comments into.
There was like last year and then they went through some changes and then we got new plans a few months ago. Maybe May or re, you know, this year. And then we, we drew up comments on them.
Okay.
Thank you. But I, and I, I got waylaid talking about Eli, but I do want to make sure that it is clear that yes, we're, we're happy to, to continue a dialogue with the, um, uh, the developers. And yes, the project would have a massive impact on the Gauges' house and their home, their home and their life.
I, I'm, the reason I asked that question is because, um, it seems right, the, um, it has been outlined that the backyard has been the most important view. And it seems that the applicant has been able to address that and shift, um, their design to, to open up the backyard view, uh, into the ridge. And it's, you know, of course it's a two-story house, but we're also talking about the area where that is surrounded by the new additions and the two-story houses throughout. So it seems like this is where it would be going, um, in the future regardless, uh, to maximize the square footage. So, uh, it seems again, I, and that's the reason I asked the applicant the question. What was, you know, redesign and consideration in regards to the backyard? I understand your concerns about the front porch. It's clearly shown on the view here, um, but I'm, I'm just trying to see what was the compromise and what your client has, was possibly agreeing on and kind of just give a historical precedence. But if you don't have that information, that's fine.
So, um, I actually do have more pictures from the backyard that, um, I, I, I appreciate that the, that the building was redesigned, but.
All right, I'm going to interject here because what I'm hearing is that commissioners are asking, you know, is it this or is it that? And we've got a hierarchy of order here of different things that affect for different reasons, right? So we've got the view of TAM, we've got the wall of the height, we've got, um, wanting to have their backyard. So there's a number of issues that have been pointed out by yourself and that are in the report so that we can't identify one, but there are several bullet points to this. It's our job now to address those bullet points and talk about that. And maybe we ask further questions of both the applicant and you. But, um, we could go around this for a while if we just tried to identify what's okay, what's not. I don't think we could get there right now. I appreciate the ideas about trying to identify what the neighbor might put up with, but I think we have to establish our own hierarchy of what we're going to say are the issues that we want to address. And then we'll come back to everybody. Anything else you guys want to ask the attorney? Well, thank you. We'll continue with public comment and, um, because we're not done here. Um, I think we may come back.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Um, Claire, do you have anybody online that wants to pop up? Oh, okay. All right.
I'm Leanne Lee and I'm having a little PTSD standing here. But, um, we live across the street at 247 Chapman and we look at the story polls every day. We walk outside, we see it out the windows and, uh, it looks amazing. I think that it's going to be beautiful. And this is a beautiful family in a beautiful neighborhood and it's going to contribute for sure to the neighborhood, to the community, to the town. Um, and this family deserves to have a nice house. I think it's going to be. I'm in support.
Okay, thank you.
Valerie Kachell and I'm also a Cordero Madera resident. Um, I'm in their Gardens neighborhood. And, um, I would just like to say, um, again, some support for having the Gravams and their commitment to the community and to the neighborhood. Um, and, uh, they've done a lot for the schools. They built the Gaga pit at Neil Cummins. Um, they, Ashley's on the PTO. And as someone who's also shared one bathroom with two children, I do not recommend it. It's currently a three-bedroom, one bath, zero stars for sharing your bathroom with your children. This is something that will allow their family to grow and to continue being in the neighborhood. So thank you so much for considering the project.
Thank you. All right. My apologies. Anyone else in the room at this moment? Okay. So Claire, anybody else online? A hand up.
There's no hands up online. I do have two comments. I'm going to read into the record.
Okay, please. Yeah.
To the Cordero Madera Town Council, I have lived across the street from 400 Oakdale at the address above three, oh, 243 Chapman Drive for 25 years. Until the current owners moved in, this has always been a dowdy little rental in this very old quaint house, long in need of repair and upgrade. As a rental, it was a sad little place. With the advent of a young and vital family, residents with skin in the game, as to our wonderful old but mixed neighborhood, we are thrilled at the prospect of ongoing upgrade to the neighborhood and our properties. Having owners finally take on the property, I am in enthusiastic favor of seeing it come into the current century. Having carefully reviewed the plans, I'm in favor of all the proposed remodel design. All I understand, there is a tiny bit of resistance to change. The rest of us are so happy to welcome not only the family, but their wonderful upgrade to the neighborhood. We approve of this proposal. We're all for it. Sincerely, Deborah Harvey. And again, the address was 243 Chapman Drive. Sorry, missed that initially. And then I have a second comment. This comment is from George Kalianis at 239 Chapman Drive. I'd like the following right into the record. Good evening. My name is George Kalianis. I live at 239 Chapman Drive, across the street from 400 Oakdale on Chapman Drive. I've lived at my home since 1979 and as long as I could remember, prior to John and Ashley buying 400 Oakdale, this house has been a rental with people coming and going and the house always showing differed maintenance. I've seen the plans for the new house. It's going to be a beautiful home, replacing a house that's a hundred years old. This new house will enhance and beautify our neighborhood and my wife Shelley and I would love to see the approval and completion of the new home as planned. Thank you, George.
Okay, are those the two? You have more?
Those are the two. I'm going to check the, uh, online one more time. Yep, still no hands.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, uh, we've heard most of the public comment. And before anybody else gets back up or the applicant wants to respond to any of this, um, uh, I would like to say to the applicant to refrain from any characterizations of the neighbors and their attorney in such a manner, um, it's not appropriate for this venue or any venue. So please stick with the facts, um, and refrain from creating a story or a scenario about them. Is there anything you would like to say in response to the, uh, comments you've heard tonight?
I've never met Eli. I'm sure he's a wonderful person. I totally understand his position of his house and trying to protect his views. Every single design review I've ever been in, the same thing has happened. And it's unfortunate that there's always somebody impacted in this job. It's a very hard job for you guys to do. We did try to meet with Eli many, many times. Bill tried to set up meetings with Eli, Zoom meetings, and we could not get that together. So John and I made ourselves available and it didn't happen, I believe. Speak for Martha, but I believe she was involved at that time trying to additionally get meetings with Eli. From what we heard from Eli, like I said, he's, I don't know him personally, never met him. Uh, we got to the conclusion that anything but a one-story house was not going to be acceptable to him. Um, and he made that very clear to us. And I felt like we went in and made lots of design adjustments and pulled our plan in every single way we possibly could and still keep the integrity of the design, which took us 16 months working with Bill in our first round. So, um, I really feel like we've done a beautiful job on the design. Like I said, stuck between a rock and a hard place. The first thing they told us is they wanted the backyard views. That's what they talked about in their, uh, beginning letter is the backyard and, uh, a few other things. We can't do everything. So we have to build a house. So we went in and we pulled what we felt like were the biggest privacy issues with reducing the windows, taking the kitchen where we're cooking and laughing. To me, that's what a neighborhood is about. People in their yards enjoying the community. And we tried to move all that to the other side. So we took off the deck, which had no impact on him at all, but just because some other neighbors up the hill. My brother literally went and talked to everybody. Uh, and we made those adjustments off of that meeting that we weren't even at. And watched the meeting and did everything we could that we felt like was reasonable to make adjustments. Now, usually in a designer review meeting, they have you move the wall in 10 inches. Does that really solve all the problems? Not in my opinion. You know, most neighbors are 10 feet apart or 30 feet apart. I know that their house is situated in a special way. It's also setback, but I feel like we really did try to appease the neighbor and make a lot of adjustments for our next round.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. So at this moment, then I would say we would close the public comment. Not that we won't open it again if necessary, but right now we'll close it. Um, before we start, um, talking about it up here, um, I would just like to, uh, talk about, uh, the, the parameters of the project right now. And we have said many times that, um, the entitlement or the planning restrictions of height and setback and square footage are not, are not given that you get to, uh, uh, occupy in your plan. They are limits and it is up to the commission to decide if they are entitled for that. Um, so we have a height of this project that is at its maximum. We have, uh, FAR that's at its maximum. Um, I realize that these people would like to build a beautiful house for themselves in this location. Um, I will save my opinions for later, but I just want to state that for everybody here that we have said that over the years when we approach these projects. They don't necessarily get those, uh, parameters, uh, title to them only if we feel that it's not appropriate. So, that's up to us to, uh, adjudicate here and make recommendations. So, um, I think we're going to go through a couple of rounds of discussion up here, uh, about this and hear from everybody at least twice as we go through this. So, um, we have, um, 50 minutes before we have to extend the meeting. So, and, uh, that's our time limit for tonight. So I would like to try and fit everything in. So, um, I'm going to start with Daniel over here and see what he has to throw out initially and we'll come back to everybody, I think for a second round.
I was afraid you're going to say that.
That's all right. We can.
No, no, it's okay. Uh, um, I guess, uh, you know, we talked about what, if any adjustments could be made that would potentially ameliorate to some extent this problem. Uh, and the, and the one that, that, um, that I'm most concerned about is the view, uh, because, uh, uh, the, you know, houses in Cordero Madera are changing. Single families, people are adding two stories. They're tearing down houses, building two stories. There's many, many two-story houses in the neighborhood. Uh, so the, the height of the house, the fact that it's two stories in itself doesn't bother me. And I think, you know, that it sounds like they've been working with staff and have made a lot of adjustments. I think the challenge is, uh, I wouldn't at this point know what adjustments to kind of recommend because on one hand, we hear the backyard view is most important and you can see that they made, tried to make some adjustments to accommodate that. And on the site visit, it sort of seemed like maybe the view from the living room, dining room was more, and the view of mountain was more important. So, you know, and I'm not sure anything other than one story would solve that problem, uh, uh, other than shifting the house. So, uh, I'm hard pressed to know what, um, what we can suggest as a compromise here. Uh, I will say that, um, uh, you know, I think the view impact is significant, uh, potentially, and I'm not a realtor, but potentially to the value of the house, uh, a 404, uh, and, um, and, uh, you know, we, the, the zoning code doesn't give you very specific guidelines about how much of the view is important. Uh, and, and I think, you know, uh, we do want to encourage families to be able to stay in town and grow and, and, uh, that's also in the ordinance. So, uh, I'm, I guess I'm just, uh, a little bit befuddled about what we can recommend here in terms of some compromise.
All right. Well, that's a good starting comment. Thank you. Um, I think that's what we're in search of here. If we do want to get to that point, I think that we can say what it is that is not acceptable. Um, I, it's not for us particularly to say what is acceptable. So, um, we can keep that in mind. And if we get to that, that's, that's a great help to everybody. Um, Valerie, I want to hear what you have to say here.
I'm in the same dispute, um, with myself, I guess, over this as well, because I understand that, uh, through the really lengthy design process, the applicant tried to accommodate different parts of the concerns that, uh, 404 Oakdale, uh, neighbor had. And it seems from the backyard specifically, uh, the view was partially maintained. And also in fact, that the neighbor is adjacent to 408 Oakdale, that is also a two-story house. It just seems like that's where all of the houses eventually will end up, right? They will be two-story houses. Um, I also do understand the concern of the impacted view. The view will be. I also do understand the concern of the impacted view. The view will be destroyed to that neighbor specifically from the porch, from the living room, and from the dining area. In fact, when we were there and took pictures, right, it's clearly that it will be overshadowed by the two-story houses. So I'm I'm in the same page as Dan, as I am not really sure what the compromise is. And it does seem like a one-story house is not the way to go for the family to grow. Or and for this unique position of the lot as well of the way it works out. So again, it's difficult to make the decision. If the backyard is important, it seems there are a lot of points that have been addressed through the design process for that family to move on with their design. If there are any additional compromises, I'm not sure, because even if it's one story, back to the Jim's point, it's, it will be taller and it will close the ridge. So it's difficult to, again, make that decision.
Thank you. Jim, you want to venture into this?
Yeah, I mean, I think our guiding principles of our general plan kind of are contradicting each other as I think that the guiding principles and are kind of contradicting each other when we talk about encouraging improvement and investing in the housing stock. And then you get to the view guiding principles where they start talking about. You know, how, what's a reasonable amount of development to minute, minute, you know, minimize and mitigate some of the significant and adverse privacy and sunlight concerns, but it's also, it also states that we need to balance between the two neighbors. That's why I was trying to get to the backyard. If that's the most important piece of the neighboring, you know, that's where they spend all their time. Then, then, then the addition's in the right place. If my concern is, is if we go ahead and ask these applicants to go and design a single-family home, and they, you know, and they put a proper structure together with a regular or even a five and twelve pitch roof, it's gonna block the ridge anyway. Since the house was set so far back and we're in the winter, I kind of feel like the sunlight isn't much of an issue as much as that that view to the ridge. I do think if some of the vegetation was cut sort of in the front of the house, that they could still maintain some of that that ridge view that over kind of where your house is to Mill Valley, over the garage, and also towards the back of the house. But I would love to have the owner of four oh four here just to discuss what what would be the best compromise for them. I'm not too concerned about the the pool equipment and HVAC, because I think that they can come up with something that that meets the DB levels required to meet our ordinance. But yeah, I think we're all struggling with the same thing. My concern is a single story is gonna still block that view, unfortunately. I do think that the applicants could redesign the roofline a little bit to lower the roof and still maintain the volumes. We just have one big roof and it's tipping up from thirty feet out. And you can see in the section that there's a a significant amount of attic space where we might be able to address some of the back of the house and articulating a little bit more so the neighbor's not looking at a blank wall. And lower the height of that ridge, and everybody maintains the ceiling heights and the desired volumes that they want. So I could see that as being some sort of compromise. And even the addition where it is and the floor plan stays the way it is.
Okay, some interesting thoughts there. I'm gonna jump into this, and first off, say that it's a very nice design of a house. It's a very attractive, well-thought-out building, no doubt about it. I can't argue with what they put together. Very well done, good materials, good layout. I think that it's just too big for that lot in Corder Madera. It booms, it's too big. It's it's taking care, taking advantage of every aspect of permissions. And the size of it would indicate that it needs to be smaller, it needs to be lower. And there's a lot of house for that lot. I think that regardless of whether the owner is in residence or not, we have to look at the fact that what's considered a primary view of Mount Tam is blocked by this thing. And it's not up to us to say it's okay to block that. But it's not okay to block it from our perspective or my perspective that it's in the planning code to keep preserve Mount Tam views whenever possible from primary areas. It talks about that. The living room and the dining room are primary areas, and that addition, that house is built, it's gone. The backyard did not have that much of a view of Tam further down the hill toward the north. But I don't need to even mention that our fifth commissioner would say absolutely, this blocks the view, not acceptable. So that's one item. The view is blocked of Tam. The code talks about primary views from primary spaces, and that primary view is Tam and Christmas Tree Hill. I can't say it's okay to block it. I don't think it is. I don't know what transpired, but what we do know is that we were at that meeting and that was canceled at the last minute, but the applicant didn't choose to come back to another study session. Could have had another study session. We could have had this conversation somewhere in between then and now to give you guys some feedback. I think that would have been an appropriate action to find out what the commission thinks. And you might have modified your design. I think trying to forge ahead without that bit of information, which is recommended by staff, and without addressing what I think we're voicing up here was short-sighted. The dialogue with the neighbor has to be established. We're not gonna do that for you. We can't make that happen. Staff can enable it and try to get you guys together, but I think it's our position up here that you guys have to have the conversation. I don't know attorney to do the dialogue, but I think you have to work this out. My position would be similar to Daniel's, and that flipping the house on the property would seem to be the appropriate thing. But if four oh four says, no, we want our backyard view, then maybe it's a roadblock. I don't know. I don't know how to construct it. You have spent a lot of time and effort and money to get this design finalized, but for my money, I'd say, keep the Tam view, because when you sit in the living room, you have a distance view. You do not want to sit in your living room and dining room and have a wall of a house there. That's my opinion. I don't think anybody who bought that house would want that wall of a house either. I think it's our, coming upon us, our responsibility to say, you can't block that view. I think it's, it's great that you've garnered so much support from people around town. I understand that. It's great. You must, you're fine people, but you can't just bully and say, this is what I want. I want to maximize height. I want to maximize square footage, and I want to put this house on this lot. You don't necessarily get to do that. You are entitled to develop the property, but I think you have to find a way that fits within a better set of parameters for Corder Madera. Doesn't maximize everything out to the nth degree. And that's where I start with this. So you guys have any response or any additional thoughts about this? Given what I said?
Well, Peter, in your view, would you let's just say they came back with a single story, and it blocked half of that ridge. Is it still gonna be inappropriate in the way you're interpreting?
It would be, but you know, the development two issues there. One is the block of Tam, and the other is the massiveness of it way above it. And when you sit in that living room and you sit there, you just go, oh, my God, it's a wall of a house right there. It's really big. And it takes away every sense of spatial enjoyment. If it were a single story, but it still blocked Tam, probably better off. If four oh four said, yeah, we could lose Tam if it's a single story and a better design, and we keep our backyard, probably more acceptable. Those people have to get in the negotiation. We can't say this is what you do. And unfortunately, it's up to staff to sort of enable that, carry that conversation on as best as you can. If you have two unwilling people to really come together, I don't know what you do, but you've got to, you guys have done a great job of this so far. And somebody has to tell the four oh four that they gotta come to the table with earnestness. And I think four hundred has to come to the table and say, okay, we get it. We're not gonna build a wall. We're not gonna block these views. Somewhere in there is a compromise. Something has to be done. I don't think this plan is a compromise. It's a, it's a big house on that lot. That's what my response.
I have a question to that. So I mean, even if we do, like to Dan's point, reverse the house, right? It seems it's still going to be an issue with the neighbor. So again, like, yeah, to your point, my question is, would what compromise would neighbor allow? And, you know, I feel like, I strongly feel like a one-story solution is not an answer, and it's not a compromise, because it will affect regardless. So it seems like there should be a deeper discussion between neighbors to understand what, where the second story can be built.
Right.
I would just, I think that was very good, Peter. But I would also say to the owner of four oh four that you know, what we're looking at is, you know, then the code says that, yeah, views are important, but but being able to accommodate growth in the community is also important. So I think the owner of four oh four has got to realize that there's gonna have to be some compromise here, I think.
Agreed, yeah.
I mean, both have to compromise, but particularly four oh four to just say, okay, only one story may not be, you know, may not be the solution.
Right.
The only thing I could think of is, is to suggest to try to tuck it in under a one-story then, if that's the direction the commission's going, and try to put some space underneath a tall ridge, a taller ridge. And then it would seem like a smaller house, but it could get the square footage underneath a steeper pitch roof with dormers.
Well, maybe it is a solution. Again, I think that we would, if somebody asked us to list out the reasons for postponing to date uncertain, would be to say that you've got to address the bulk of the house. Does that mean dropping it down to shorter interior wall heights? Somehow adjudicating the spaces so they're pushed a little further away. Talk to four oh four and find out if they are okay with losing the Tam view and what to do about the backyard. So it's not up to us to say, do this or do that. I think we've just got to say, the height is too much, the view block is present, and you've got to figure out what to do with the backyard for four. That's what I, I think. That's what we're, we're trying to address. And the parameters are used fully, the twenty-nine foot, the square footage, and all of that. Maybe they could put the, you can have an ADU in the setback at the back, but then you start the house and you put the wall in front. I don't know, but you could put the ADU still on the setback at the back if you wanted to. You don't have to sacrifice that just by go put that or stretching the house out maybe at the backyard where you don't have a Tam view. And you have a little more sense of space that you can go up two stories. That's up to four oh four to say what they're willing to negotiate or accede to. I don't know. I can't say. But I think that four oh four has legitimate complaints. As a commission, we have complaints about the wall and the loss of view. And the fact that they used up every bit of allowable permissions. I don't know. Do you feel like the house is too big for the lot, or do you feel it's appropriately sized?
Again, I think that the massing could be, could be worked on. It's a pretty long lot. It's, you know, it's a hundred and forty feet. Again, by reworking the roof, the roofline a little bit, I think that they could bring the scale of it down, and it would, it would feel a little bit less grandiose. And that could bring the back wall down without losing the square footage or you know, obviously, the story poles always look big when they're there. You start looking at some of the houses up and down the street, and you say, well, that's a big house if it didn't have mature trees in front of it. And look at story poles, we might be saying the same thing. But I do agree that the big back wall is a problem. You're looking right at a back wall. I'm just concerned that a one-story, back to, if it comes back as a one-story, and they manipulate it, and then it blocks the views that we're gonna be sitting at the same place, and I want to make sure that they can develop this property.
I think that's gonna be a matter of negotiation out there between the people. So if they come back and say that they've adjusted the bulk, they've adjusted where they put the house, and we're okay with that, you know, then we can say, all right, we as a commission approve the other elements, architecture, bulk mass, all that stuff, and they've solved the acceptability issue. That's what I would hope would happen. If they get into serious dialogue, and staff has to make sure that out of that dialogue comes some certainty about what each party is willing to do, except. Or if they don't, and the applicant decides to bring it back and say, we're doing it, we're applying it the way we want, that's a possibility. They could say that. And then we have to decide if it's acceptable, whether we prove it or deny it. And if we deny it, then it would go to town council at that point. It may be that there is no result in negotiation. It could be a stalemate. And then the applicant can say, we're done. We're applying. We want this adjudicated. You can do that. That could happen. So we have Valerie, anything else you want to say?
No, I think, I think we discussed.
Okay. So we're at the point where, what, I think we're all on the same page that we're going to do a date uncertain with this. And the applicant can say to that request, no, we want a decision from the planning commission on this design. You guys can do that. You can say, we don't accept any delay in this. We want to hear you say what will or will not take it, and then you could appeal it to the town council right out of this meeting. You can go to a date uncertain, come back with a new design after you've negotiated, or staff says they're ready to present again. So you guys can ball it over, talk to four oh four, come to some agreement or not, bring it back, and staff says they want it heard again for a decision. Okay. Please stand up to the microphone, and we want to hear what you have to say, but I, we don't need to rehash what you tried or didn't do or didn't work.
Well, I mean, you just said, you know, in my notes, you're like, you need a dialogue. I can't tell you what direction to go.
I don't know what happened, but the attorney is over there saying that she is willing to make the dialogue or represent the decisions. So she's saying that, and we have to take her.
He's talked to every single neighbor and communicated with every single neighbor and got blue stamps everywhere.
Regardless, I'm not, that's not important right now. We're talking about four oh four, and she's willing to stand there and say she will negotiate for the owner or get the owner.
You couldn't even say that she wouldn't say no to a second story. She just
Can't right now.
around the question.
That, we're not gonna debate this right now. So you can say to us right now, I want a decision tonight. I want I want to come back to a date uncertain after you've negotiated or not. Tell staff.
I still don't have any direction, Peter, on what, how can I make that decision when I have zero direction on what your parameters are because you're you're here to vote no and and I don't know what you want.
I told you very clearly, the view is blocked, the house is too big, it's too bulky. And we can say that as a commission, so reduce the bulk of the house, reduce the wall, figure out what to do with the views. And you got to talk to 404 to figure that.
I heard you say that. I didn't hear.
May I interrupt for a second? You can sit down for the moment. So what we're hearing from you is that as of tonight, you would not be able to make the findings. You provided direction to the applicant to work with the neighbor. And I just want to be clear that there is not a resolution before you that this was a neutral recommendation. So your direction would be to come back at a date time uncertain at this point.
Right, yes.
And that at that point, we would either come back with the applicant's project either redesigned in communication with 404 or as they would request for a recommendation. And at that time, you could approve or deny the project in which that could be appealed to the town council. So I think we have the direction that we need to move forward and we can work with the applicant to make sure that the direction is clear to them as well. And but we understand your direction.
Amy, thank you for clarifying and interrupt. Okay. So we have no resolution here. We have nothing to vote on. It's just going to be that you guys are going to run with it and see what you can make out of this. All right. Then we're going to close this item and move on. So thank you very much. You guys can empty the room. We'll just sort of wait for the room to empty before we continue with the rest of our agenda. All right. Again, thank you, Amy. I guess I was getting a little activated there. Okay. So we have the point where we get to commissioner reports and planning staff reports. I think I was covering for somebody for town council last week. And I watched that meeting. And it was not a long agenda, but there was a very long discussion about public works contractual problems with the people who do the service around town. And at the end of the day, it was a three-two vote to continue with using the existing contractor to continue to do the work around town with Flores Builders Landscape Division. But it was interesting and I'm going to keep this short, but who commissioners felt or council members felt that it was really important to do a open bidding process for this work. Fact is that they're probably so ridiculously cheap. Rates would probably almost double if they became into an open bidding against other contractors and the town has no bandwidth to create a bidable document for what they do around town. So one commissioners or one council member said, if it's not broke, don't fix it. So anyway, it's very lively, interesting discussion, but that's what happened primarily. And they Adam spoke about the age-friendly center difficulty in getting it off the ground and has asked for two members to become a committee to help him wrangle the age-friendly group into a place of anybody online? Compliance anyway, so just kidding. But it's been tough, I know for him. So that was those are the primary two things that came out council meeting. They reported on how successful Oktoberfest was and Adam had said, I have a ADU session. Tell us about that. Or somebody was there, right?
Yes, as far as a report, I don't have anything to report, but we can talk about the ADU workshop that was held last Thursday. The planning team did a great job. Holding that workshop provided a lot of education on some of the changes that you all have reviewed as part of your study session and some discussion around the pre-approved ADU plans and that legislation that is being implemented. And there were probably about fifteen to twenty that attended online and in person. So it was hybrid. And the team provided food, which was great and it all around, it was, we got a lot of great feedback and Claire designed a on-the-spot survey method. So all that will be synthesized for you at the the next meetings when you are able to consider the ordinance.
That's great. Okay, so it's participation, ADUs are up and what else do you want to tell us?
I don't have anything else to report on tonight.
Oh, my God, okay. So commissioners, anything else?
Did we ever come to a resolution on moving the date that we talked about in November?
I think we were waiting Commissioner Boishoier if you were knew if you could participate remotely on the Wednesday, the twentieth.
No, no.
So then the date, the date will stay the rid, the date of the twelfth. We'll miss you, Jim.
Okay.
So I just had a general question. Is is there any, what would happen if the neighbor, we they couldn't get the neighbor even to talk to the applicant? I mean.
They talked about that off offline.
Great, I just, you know, I'm a little, I left this the last meeting just a little bit wonderous if we could get that.
Yeah, I wonder the same thing. So education would be great.
Have individual conversations with you.
Yeah, important, right? No way, yeah, no way of discussing that. So, all right. The notes are in here. Does anybody have any commentary on the notes? I didn't see anything. Okay. So we can all approve the notes.
I abstained since I wasn't at the meeting.
Three of us. We approve the notes?
Aye.
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 Okay. That said, let's adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Good night.